Okay. Okay, the time is five thirty-five P M. Lindop's open session meeting is in order. Can I get a roll call?
Board member Griffin, I mean, board president Griffin.
Here.
Board secretary Hannah.
Here.
Board member Dawson. Board member Morris.
Here.
Board member Taylor. Absent. Board member Williams Woolford. Oh, absent.
We're not gonna have a quorum, are we?
Yes, Ms. Griffin. You have six, you have three, it's okay. Next on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, next we have the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, if we could have a moment of silence, please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate or silent.
I can hear now you guys, this is Penny, board member Penny Williams Woolford, I'm present.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Woolford. Okay, um. Public hearing on twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three budget.
Mr. Baranic.
Good evening, Board of Education, administrators, staff and community members. To be transparent with the community as we've presented our budget outline, uh, this is our public hearing for our final budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Nothing has changed in this budget. No figures for revenue, no figures for expenditure, what has been presented for the past few months is identical on that. I just wanted to be transparent with the community. If there was any community comments in regards to our budgets, it is a slight surplus. So revenue exceeds our expenditures with it, we tried to be really nice and tight with this. And like you said, took a different approach, uh, going with the zero-based budgeting and really hitting hard uh, our budget line items to make sure that we're maximizing every dollar that we have available and not exceeding our spending over our revenue. At this time, is there any questions from the board members or the community?
Okay, if not, we're gonna go on to the next item, which is the public here in regarding administrative cost limitations. Mr. Baranic, you're presenting.
Good evening, once again, Board of Education, administrator, staff and community members. As part of the budgeting process, um, the district is kept in certain function codes. With this being said, the district is capped for five percent, or the board would have to have a public hearing and approve a resolution and approve with the budget, our admin costs exceeding five percent. If we look at this document, um, that is up, this is taken exactly from our ISB budgets under the admin cost worksheet. The reason for the increase of over five percent is if we look at this, there is an increase under the superintendent's function code. This is directly correlated to the five-year contract that you passed for Dr. Jackson. So it's last year's expenditures unaudited versus our budget figures in the codes. The twelve percent increase, the majority of that is directly correlated to the five-year contract that the board approved for Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Baranic. Um, next we have, does anyone have any questions? Okay, so next we'll have spotlight on success.
So excited about spotlight on success tonight, I will turn this over to Mrs. O'Pade Sefora.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for coming, Lindop, community members and staff. Thank you so much for being here, so we're gonna be talking about Lindop-style horticulture. Horticulture is a course that is what started last year as an elective for our grade six students. So, Ms. Madlock, take it away.
I would love to do this part, but I'm going to refer to Ellis McKay.
Horticulture is the practice of growing plants in yards or other outside spaces for ornamental, dietary or medical purposes.
Wow, can you tell us about the where and why?
Would you like me to do that, or would you like to do that?
I think I would like to do that. So, the where and why. The art of managing and cultivating gardens will be put into practice by our students. Michelle, you wanna tell us about our courtyard?
In our garden center courtyard and in the front of the school main entrance, students will plant and grow plants. Our hope is to cultivate edible plants and have fun and improve for and in a prove respect for the environment.
So why do we need to improve respect for the environment? So students, what students are gonna be learning? So the corp, they're gonna learn how to cooperate with one another in terms of developing their abilities in class. Students learn the amount of time it takes to cultivate plants. The time and effort commit commitment will help students understand the value of nature, the effort it takes to produce food, and where food originates from. So what else?
I'm glad you asked. What else? Students will learn about plants firsthand. They'll have a first hands-on experience. They'll learn why, um, some plants require special attention, like you can't water them too often. They have to have proper sunlight. They'll also learn, uh, the many components such as stems, flowers, roots, leaves, seeds and petals.
Thank you, Ms. Madlock. So now, what's going to happen is that we are going to have our two Lindop scholars, which is Michelle Diaz and Mr. Evan McKay. Now, Michelle wrote in Spanish, you know, she also knows how to read Spanish in Spanish, so yay to Senora Boswell, who has taught and cultivated our students, so she's gonna tell you about the awesome veggies in El Espanol. Take it away, Ms. Diaz.
Hello, hola. Thank you for having me here, um, I will be talking about, uh, the plants. El año pasado yo aprendí sobre las plantas. Necesitan luz, agua, cuidado para sobrevivir. En otoño plantamos plantas de, de polvos que nacen en primavera. En primavera plantamos tomates pimiento, verde, pimiento, picante. Yo realmente lo disfruté estar en horticulture. Thank you.
All right, and Ellis is gonna tell us, so what you don't know is that Michelle was able to plant. So they were the ones who planted it last year, and now Ellis in grade six is the one who's reaping what Michelle and her class planted last year. Go ahead, Mr. McKay.
Hello. Hello, my name is Ellis, and this year, sixth grade horticulture class reaped the harvest of last year's class. We picked green peppers, bell peppers and tomatoes. It was very exciting to share the vegetables with our family and friends.
There's also a video embedded, if you'd like to watch that. Giving honor to Ms. Eames, who used to be the horticulture teacher, and so Ms. Madlock was able to share what we produce here at Lindop.
Final remarks?
Sure, by offering horticulture as an elective, we're planting seeds right now. Because we're encouraging our students to be creative and think outside the box. And before I give it over to Mr. Swinski, so that he may add something, I just wanna leave this thought with you all. Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day. Teach him how to fish and you feed him for a lifetime, thank you.
I'm not sure what's going on, but if, or if I'm the only one, but it keeps going in and out.
Mr. Zwinski, would you like to say, this is where, so this is Mr. Zwinski's first year here at Lindop, he is our new horticulture teacher.
All right, thank you, I know I've done enough talking already. But I'm Mr. Swinski, sixth grade science, I also do horticulture. As Ms. O said, it's first year, I'm very excited, I'm also excited to take over horticulture. Time investment and the reward that you get out of it is the main message here. So when you plant a seed and you water it for a month straight, and then that first leaf pops out, that first plant starts growing, it's very exciting. And hopefully that message carries through, that if you put your time and effort into something, it might not pay off that day, but down the road, it's gonna happen.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Thank you, I know they were a little bit modest here because the electives began, um, a couple years ago, but it really took off with our horticulture, um, classroom, and they had all of the plants, and what we're looking to do next is to have our own community garden, so we are moving in that direction. Thank you all so much.
What did they do with the vegetables that you picked? Oh, that's okay, yeah, that's, oh.
Glad you asked, what did we do with the vegetables? Actually, the students picked them, um, several weeks ago, and we set them outside of the sixth grade classroom. They were able to take some home to share with their family. Um, there were some that were also picked during the summer and put in the front office, and I had the opportunity to take some home, and I made fried green tomatoes. I have to tell you, they were delicious.
Are there any further comments? If not, next we have public comments, are there any?
We do not have any public comments, President Griffin.
Good evening again. May I have a motion for the nomination for vice president?
All right, this is board member Hannah. Am I reading the motion? Okay. I make a motion that. Yeah.
This is Tanya Taylor, good evening. I make a motion, the motion is on the floor, I make a motion, uh, for the nominees for vice president. I'm making, um, the motion that Erin Hannah become vice president.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Okay, can we have a vote?
Sorry, Ms. Griffin, one moment.
Sorry.
My only nomination was for Mr. Morris, my nomination, but anything from there?
When you second? Make a second.
Who seconded that?
We need a second.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Okay, can we do the roll call for the first motion on the floor? That motion was made by, uh, Mrs. Taylor, and she nominated Mr. Hannah and Mr. Morris seconded the motion. May we please have a roll call for the first motion?
For President Griffin?
Yay.
For Secretary Hannah?
I abstain.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yay.
For member Taylor?
Yay.
For member Williams Woolford?
Yay. Okay, motion carries. Do we?
Motion on the floor was made by Mr. Hannah and Mr. I'm sorry, and Ms. Griffin seconded it, and this is for Mr. Morris. Roll call.
For President Griffin?
Wait, I'm sorry, Dr. Jackson, I must have, wait, what's the motion? I thought there was one nomination.
So there are two on the floor, you have to take all nominations, if there are more than one. One is for Mr. Hannah, one is for Mr. Morris.
Oh, I didn't hear that nomination for Mr. Morris, okay, I thought it was one, okay.
Roll call. Um, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Jackson, just so that, since I didn't hear the first one, how many votes did, cuz I voted for it. Board member Hannah, right? That was the most, okay, how many, um, votes did he get?
Five.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was hearing everything clearly, since I didn't hear the nomination, thank you. I can't hear Mr. Don.
I'm sorry, um, sorry, this is Brian Dawson. Okay. I was trying to understand, um, the nominations, um. It seems that board member Hannah nominated board member Morris, and board member Taylor nominated board member Hannah.
Yes.
I thought that there was only one person that got nominated, I didn't, I didn't hear Aaron's nomination of board member Morris, so I thought there was only one.
So, but you can have, so there are different nominations, and so you can, there's just the one there for whatever name the person is nominating can say it.
Dr. Jackson, could the board strike the nomination for Mr. Morris?
Uh, we need a roll call to strike it, absolutely, can you do a roll call?
President Griffin?
Adam Griffin.
Yay.
Secretary Hannah?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yay.
For member Taylor?
Yay.
For member Williams Woolford?
Yay.
Okay, uh, so our new vice president is Mr. Hannah. Are there any questions or any further discussion? Okay, thank you.
I think a motion needs to go on the floor for the secretary now, correct?
Yes, we now have an opening for secretary.
I make a motion that Penny Williams Woolford, um, be nominated for secretary.
Second.
I decline, I decline.
I make a motion that, um, board member, um, Woody Morris be secretary.
We have a second?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call.
President Griffin?
Yay.
Vice President Hannah?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris? For member Taylor?
Did you abstain, or, you abstained? Oh, okay.
I abstained.
Oh, okay, thank you.
For member Taylor?
I can't.
For member Taylor?
Dr. Jackson, may we strike that motion off the table, please?
All right, board member Hannah, I make the, um, I make a motion to nominate Ms. Tanya Taylor for board secretary.
Brian Dawson, I second.
Roll call. President Griffin?
Yay.
Vice President Hannah?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yes.
For member Taylor? For member Williams Woolford?
Yay. Okay, motion carries.
Our new secretary is Mrs. Tanya Taylor, our new vice president is Mr. Hannah, thank you.
Upcoming events and correspondence, Mr. Hannah?
Okay, um, currently I have no, um, correspondence, and all of the upcoming events are on the screens in front of you and should be listed in your, um, paper.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, board member Hannah, I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including the Lindop District ninety-two payroll for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, through September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventeen cent activity account reconciliation for August twenty, twenty twenty-two, and the Lindop District ninety-two accounts payable for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, through September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and that amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight and sixty-nine cent.
I second.
May I have a second?
I second that motion, Tanya Taylor.
Roll call. President Griffin?
Yay.
Vice President Hannah?
Yay.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yay.
For member Williams Woolford?
Yeah. Motion carries on a voice vote. Old business, I need a motion to, hold on. To approve the budget as presented.
I'm board member Williams Woolford, I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Uh, Mr. Ber- Mr. Baranic, you have a presentation?
He's already done his presentation earlier at the beginning of the meeting, does the board members have any other questions?
Questions.
Roll call.
For President Griffin?
Yay.
Vice President Hannah?
Yay.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yay.
For member Williams Woolford?
Yay. Motion carries on a voice vote. I need a motion to approve the PACE budget.
Tanya Taylor, I make a motion that the board approves the PACE twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two, wait.
Twenty-four million, one fifty-
Twenty-four million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, of which Lindop's portion is eight hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars as presented.
I second, board member Hannah.
Mr. Baranic?
Good evening, Board of Education, administrators, staff members and community members. Uh, PACE's FY twenty-three budget is balanced at twenty-three million roughly. Lindop's portion is eight hundred and seventy thousand. On this slide up here, it breaks out the funds that we pay, our eight hundred and seventy thousand out of it. If we look at the top, that's our ed fund, that's our largest, um, amount, the amount that the that entails our cost on that is all the different services that we receive from PACE that are in-house here, and then also what we pay with students who are placed at PACE, uh, for staffing needs, their benefit needs, their transportation needs, uh, their facilities is broken down in the next line item here, in order to keep their facility up and running, we get charged the portion. And then obviously, they have a transportation section, uh, also for various things with getting routes, working with first student, and we have a small portion with it. Um, year after year, we look at these costs, and we look at, uh, our student needs, and that's what drives our budget that we have with PACE on that. This is very comparable to our mid-year costs that we had in January. Uh, it's up slightly, but not significantly, we're up about five thousand dollars from what our mid-year cost is, and year after year, these costs do fluctuate depending on our student needs. We have seen an increase within the past couple years because we have sent additional kids to PACE due to the needs that PACE can handle and Lindop can't. That environment, that setting is what was needed for those students, and then also we have added, um, some additional staff, which has been brought to the board at various times with adding FTE percentages. And I can't go into exact details, but I know every time that we add services, it's presented to the board so that we're transparent as we move forward with our costs as it relates to working with PACE. Is there any questions in regard to the PACE budget for this current school year?
I guess my question is actually to Mr. Dawson, is there anything, Mr. Dawson, board member Dawson, that the board needs to know based on, um, your meeting regarding the budget?
Uh, no, I don't have any comment about this budget, it's pretty straightforward, and any changes I would have to bring to the board. If there is an upcoming change, uh, I've spoken at length about, um, how PACE High School has had numbers that have been fluctuating, and that has been our main concern. But, um, if there's a change to our portion, I'll be bringing that to the board.
Okay, if there are no further questions, uh, we can have a roll call.
For President Griffin?
Yay.
Vice President Hannah?
Yay.
For member Dawson?
Yay.
For member Morris?
Yay.
Secretary- Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Motion carries on a voice vote. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the posting of the compensation reports that include the fiscal year 2023 administrative compensation fiscal year 23 IMRF, total compensation over $75,000, and the fiscal year 2022 EIS Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report as presented.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Any question, uh, Mr. Beranik?
Good evening, once again, Board, administrators, staff, and community members. Annually, districts have to go through each year and fill out these reports and submit them to the state of Illinois, and we post these out there for the public to view. The first report that you see on here is our EIS report. This is strictly base salary and board-paid benefits, which would include the TRS portion that the board pays, the medical insurance that the board pays, any life insurance on there. And this captures specific, I guess I'm gonna call it, jobs. Some jobs are exempt from the report per the EIS rules on it, but this captures all of our teachers, our administrators, our social workers, and meets the requirement of posting as per the Illinois School Code. These do have to be posted annually by October 1st, and usually districts bring them along with their budget and post them out there on the district website. They are readily available under the Business Office tab. If we move to the next slide, this is our FY23 admin compensation.
I can't hear if he's still-
Administrators. Okay. This next report that we have here is the FY23 admin compensation for certified staff and non-certified. On the top of the screen, you will see all administrators that are contributing to the teacher retirement fund outlined by their base salary, the board-paid TRS, their insurance benefits, their vacation days, sick days, and then also any type of life insurance with it. The non-certified are the members that pay into IMRF. I have the tech director and the director of buildings and grounds outlined by their salary, the board-paid IMRF, their vacation days, their sick days, and all the various compensation and benefits that go along with it. Annually, this must be posted to the district website. This will also be available by October 1st on our website under the Business Office tab. Is there any questions in regards to the EIS salary and benefits report or the certified admin or the non-certified admin compensation reports?
If there are no questions, uh, can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yeah.
Motion carries on a voice vote. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion that the board approve the resolution abating the working cash fund of the district as presented.
Can I get a second?
Tanya Taylor, second emotion.
Mr. Beranik?
Good evening, Board of Education, staff, administrators, and community members. I have Andy Art from Bigger to explain this resolution. He is the expert, and he will explain to the district exactly why we need to abate our working cash fund down to a specific dollar amount and to transfer it from working cash into the ed fund. Here is Mr. Art.
Thank you. As we've talked about, leading up to this point, there are several limitations that you are operating within as a school district to be able to borrow money. One of those limitations, when you're putting new money into the working cash fund, is referred to as the working cash formula. That formula dictates exactly how much money can either be in the working cash fund or outstanding as a bond issue at any given time. In order for the district to maximize the amount of working cash funds that can be gained from the bond issue, it is mandatory that the district move the ma- the maximum amount out of the working cash fund, bringing it down to what's referred to as the nickel levy. So there will be a small amount left over after the abatement. However, once the bond issue closes, that money that was moved out will be replenished from the bond proceeds. So the first resolution is essentially necessary to maximize how much in proceeds we can generate when we sell the bonds. I'm happy to answer any questions on this particular resolution at this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, hey, how's it going, Dawson? So we're moving it from the working cash into which other fund? I mean, because this, I mean, we're not putting it toward anything. We're just moving it from one fund to another, moving it to-
I believe it's being moved to the ed fund because the ed fund has the most flexibility as far as where you may be able to use that money in the future.
And we can move that money back after we've drawn out with the bond, or it'll be permanently moved there, just so I understand.
Not, not necessarily. I don't know if you-
Yeah. Mr. Dawson, the point of moving it out is to, as Mr. Art said, is to maximize the amount that can go in.
That we can add for in the bond, right?
So that money that would be in the working cash will sit there until we move it out to do our capital projects. So then the money would be moved out of the working cash, which would be our bond proceeds of roughly the $6 million.
Right.
As we go through the different projects, summer after summer after summer, we will move based on what the board would approve with the project in each phase. It might be $3 million in the first phase, so we will have a working cash transfer out of working cash and then go through the correct channels to get to the capital projects fund to address Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and we will do it in portions. Moving the current money into the ed fund allows us the flexibility to move it into different operating funds if needed. So if our O&amp;M fund does get down to where the fund balance is getting low and we can't meet payroll or pay for projects, we could do an inter-fund transfer from ed fund to the operating fu- or the O&amp;M fund very easily by just passing a board resolution on it. So moving it from the working cash to that ed fund gives us the most flexibility. And the proceeds will sit in that working cash fund until we go through the different phases of our projects.
Are there any further questions or comments? If not, can we have a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
Motion carries on a voice vote. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $6 million general obligations, limited tax school bonds, Series 2022 of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a district annual tax to pay the principal and interest on the bonds and authorizing proposed sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof as presented.
I second him.
So the purpose for this particular document is to set forth parameters that will, did I, did I interject? To set forth the parameters that will allow us to sell these bonds at a future date. This allows us the most flexibility to be able to find the best time to go to market to sell those bonds. You'll see that the main limitation here is the $6 million mark that's in the, in the agenda item itself. There are several other limitations in there as far as the maximum interest rate, the maximum term as far as the, the longest maturity, certain call provisions. And so we will be able to sell bonds within all of those, and bond counsel will make sure that any bond sale that we propose fits within those parameters at that time. Right now, we expect that we will have the bond sale next Thursday, September 29th. And as far as everything goes to plan, that should be a good date to go to market. Right now, we expect, based on everything working against the district, that the actual dollar amount that could be achieved by a bond sale to be somewhere between about $5.2 and $5.5 million with a maximum right now of about 5.6. But with, where interest rates have moved, we think it'll be somewhere in that 5.2 to 5.5 million dollar range. And as we get closer, we will keep Mr. Beranik abreast of any changes in the market. Do you have any questions on the parameters resolution? Yes.
Board Member Tanya Taylor. So that I'm clear, the resolutions are not washing one out of the other, right? It's, it's two separate resolutions, so the last one is just not exceeding the $6 million.
Correct. So if, for example, the previous resolution had not passed, you could still pass this resolution, but the dollar amount that would be obtained from a potential bond sale would be reduced by whatever amount was in the, the working cash fund.
Okay.
By abating it through the prior resolution, that allows the second resolution to, to then be able to be a larger bond sale and put more money back into the working cash fund for the district. They are, they are separate, and they are accomplishing two different goals for the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
If there are no further questions, can we have a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert.
Yay.
And just-
Motion carries.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
One, one last note is, um, if all goes to plan and the bonds are sold next Thursday, we expect that mid-October, the district would, would settle the bonds and therefore receive the proceeds from that bond issue. So we believe that'll happen mid-October, all right? It's good to see all of you. Have a great evening. So, take care.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Motion carries on a voice vote. Okay, I need a motion that the board approve the wa-
Oh, we have to do roll call.
I thought we just did that.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin.
Are we, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion for the board to approve the waiver application for administrative cost.
All right, Board Member Hannah, I make a motion that the board approve the waiver application administrative cost limitations as presented.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Mr. Beranik?
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Beranik from the presentation that he gave earlier?
No, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I missed it. Okay.
Mr. Dawson, you have a question?
Yeah, just, uh, it was in the first couple of minutes of the meeting I, I missed, I think. I just wanted a one-minute overview, so I should just follow on it.
So, part of the ISB budget, there is a estimated limitation of administrative costs on it that you're normally held to 5% from the prior year. So with the sheet that's in front of you, this has what our expenditures were from the prior year and what our budget figures are. We are at 12% on it. The 12%, the biggest increase on that is the five-year contract that you signed for Dr. Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With the salary increase, and that's under the executive administrative function code on it, and that was basically what caused this increase for it. And that was my summary that I had at the beginning.
Sorry, I did hit the tail end of that.
It's okay. That's what I'm here for, to clarify. Any questions?
Were there any further questions or comments?
So, Mr. Beranik, can you, um, tell me, like, is there implications? Or how does it impact us as a board, um, with us being over 5%?
It basically does not do anything to the board. What will happen is it will be posted on ISB that we were one of the districts that waived the cost and went over it. We did go through the legal requirements. I ran it by legal counsel just to make sure that we were in complete compliance, and we are in compliance with putting the public notice out for the community to make any, any comments, and then he- held our public hearing. And as part of the ISB budget, we just have to check the one section in the actual budget that says we are over 5% and that we did everything that was required by ISB and our attorneys per the Illinois School Code. With this over 5%, it really doesn't do anything for the district as far as any type of liability on it. It's just stating that we did have an increase under these function codes over the 5%. And it's explainable. We've been transparent with the community in regards to as what carried us over that 5%.
And we just do it for this school year, and then after that, everything's fine?
A year after year, per the contract that I believe with Dr. Jackson that was signed, it should be hovering right around that 5% overall because it still takes into effect different, I guess, object codes under purchase services, supplies, capital, if anything that was purchased under these particular function codes that the administrative costs look at.
And just to be clear, if we're going forward, we won't be over the 5%, this is the only year that we are.
Correct. I don't anticipate going over the 5% moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, Tanya Taylor, I just want to make sure we didn't incur any penalties or anything going over the percentage, correct?
No penalties with it.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, can we get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert. Absent.
Absent.
Motion carries on a voice vote. I need a motion to approve the 2022-2023 org chart.
All right, Board Member Hannah, I make a motion that the board approve the 2022-2023 organizational chart as presented.
I second, Tanya Taylor.
Oh.
Dr. Jackson?
So we have our organizational chart for the 2022-2023 school year. And did anyone have any questions about it? It is primarily the same, but this time it is denoted that there will also be evaluative input from Mrs. Oparesa Foro for Mr. Kenobi, the associate principal. Are there any questions?
So what you're saying is the only real change is in the structure of it?
Yes.
Is that input between the principal and social principal?
Yes, and it's actually just on paper now. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any further questions or comments? If not, I move that we have a roll call.
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yeah.
Board Member Williams-Wolffert. Absent.
Motion carries on a voice vote. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for August 16th, 2022 as presented.
I second.
Can I get a roll call?
Any questions about the minutes?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Absent.
Motion carries on a voice vote. I need a motion that the board approve the special closed session meeting minutes for August twenty-ninth.
Uh, Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve the special closed session meeting minutes for August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Can I get a second?
Uh, Hannah, a second.
Are there any questions? If not, can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Abstain.
And uh Board Member Williams Wilford. Absent.
Absent.
Motion carries on a voice vote. I need a motion to approve the special open session meeting minutes for August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
A second. Oh, sorry. I make a motion that the board approve the special open session meeting minutes for August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Abstain.
Or motion. I'm sorry, go ahead. Motion carries on a voice vote. One second.
Ms. Griffin, they weren't finished yet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Motion carries on a voice vote. Okay, now we have the president's report for which this current section, I don't have anything. So next would be the superintendent report.
Yes, so congratulations, Mr. Hannah and Ms. Taylor, on your new positions. We have a few things, but before I go into my report, I would like to just mention that we have, uh, Ms. Steele was here. Uh, Ms. Steele, will you come up, please? Ms. Steele is a new employee with District ninety-two. She came in as a lunch monitor and quickly just really began to develop relationships with students. She began to relate to develop relationships with parents um as well as her peers and her colleagues. And so I wanted to highlight her. This is something new that I'm doing with the staff. Every time I've walked in the cafeteria, she's always on point. She is always, um, the children uh respect uh what she is doing. And I just wanted to uh say congratulations to her. And so I did provide her with a just a little gift and saying, thank you and welcome to the team. So thank you so much, Ms. Steele. Did you have anything that you would like to?
Um, hi, you guys. Uh, my name is, uh, Belle Sheedis Steele, but everybody called me as Ms. Steele. Um, one thing I want to say without, uh, due pleasure, I do want to first and give all thanks is to God, that's one. And I also want to thank the the lunchroom ladies as also that are with me on 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 the side. You know, if it wasn't for them, just saying, hey, Ms. Steele, listen up, this is going on, I wouldn't be right here standing before you guys. So I really want to say that. And also thank you to all my staff, uh, the teachers, the superintendent, um, even Ms. Oh, I have to give her one thank you because she's always at this moment, just keep pushing me and keep pushing me. So I really want to say that. And also thank you for my family for being in the back. My my family, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be standing here too. So I just want to say that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Jackson, just.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Griffin.
Oh, no, 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 no. I didn't know if you had more.
Yes, I do. All right. And for programs and services, our back-to-school parade, we all had an amazing time. Thank you to everyone who was able to come out with us. Our next is the back-to-school barbecue. Lots of pictures from that. Everyone had an amazing time. And for our evening out at Lindo, our first time uh doing that, but it was a an amazing time had by all. Uh, the word has gotten out, and so if the board ever does decide to have this again, I'm sure that we will be filled to capacity. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, our community, uh, district relations, we were having a giveaway with, uh, in partnership with Black Men United. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for always advocating for Lindo to make sure that we have exactly what we need. Uh, this will be postponed until August, I'm sorry, October twenty-second. Something else will go out to the community. Um, the blast has already gone out, but then we will also make sure that they know we needed to have some more time um in just uh planning. Thank you so much, Mr. Morris, and also Pastor, uh, Harrell. Thank you. Next, our first person, first in-person open house since two thousand nineteen. And so it was a little different, but everything went extremely well. I can't wait to hear about the percentages of attendance uh that we had on this day. Um, everyone was very excited just to be back um in the building and and having some sense of normalcy. Uh, next, we have Patriot Day that was on the ninth of September. And you just say, see some pictures as we were honoring our um heroes, uh, some that were fallen and some that are still here with us that gave up their time and their life and their dedication to make sure that everyone else was safe. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for serving. Next, we have our PTSO car wash, and that was on the tenth. Um, and for the tenth, we had an amazing turnout. Mr. Um, Kenobi was, um, really sort of cheering that and making sure he had his power washer out there. And the PTSO was out and everyone was there, and we even have some more members. So we're looking to continue to build on those numbers and, um, increase community engagement. But we're on our way. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Uh, next, we have our committee reports. For the Personnel Committee, our next meeting is to be determined. The Finance Committee meeting, the next meeting is to be determined. The Pace Governing Board meeting was held on Wednesday, August seventeenth at six P M, with the next meeting to be September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a report for us?
Uh, yes, uh, like you said, the tomorrow will be the next meeting, the biggest event, well, um, biggest issue that. The biggest issue that Pace is dealing with right now is something that, uh, unfortunately, all schools are, and it's just a lack of teachers. They're still struggling. They've got a number of, uh, substitutes. And obviously, it's hitting them a bit harder because, you know, it's very difficult to buy a special need uh subs or substitutes that are, uh, equipped to deal with special needs children. Um, the meeting tomorrow night, uh, will be a little bit more informative. There was a a meeting at two oh nine that was had, and I'll be bringing information back, uh, tomorrow, uh, after speaking with the board about that. That's it.
Thank you. I have the Safety S E L Committee Committee meeting. Mr. Morris and Mr. Hannah, your next meeting date is Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at four P M. Then we have the Policy Committee meeting, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Williams Wilford. Next meeting date is October twelfth at four thirty P M. Para CIA meeting. Uh, Mr. Morris and Ms. Taylor, next meeting is to be determined. Technology Committee meeting, Mr. Hannah and Ms. Taylor, next meeting is to be determined. And Strategic Planning Committee meeting, Ms. Will Williams Wilford. And the next meeting date is to be determined. Are there any fur- are there any public comments?
There are none, Ms. Griffin.
Okay. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Tanya Taylor, I move that the board going to closed session under five Illinois School Code one twenty slash two, C one four eight nine and ten to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body, evidence of testimony presented in a hearing or enclosed hearing where specifically authorized by law, security procedures, school building safety and security, school disciplinary cases, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters related to individual students at six thirty-six P M.
A second, Board Member Hannah.
Can I get a roll call?
For President Griffin.
Yay.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford. Absent.
Motion carries on a voice vote. We are now out of execu- excuse me, out of open session.
Ten oh seven P M.
You can just go back to reconvene now?
Dr. Jackson, if you ready, I make the motion.
Okay, let me just go back to that. So, um, the first one is, um, recommended approval of maternity leave request for Rachel Slattery extended through November first, twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
No.
Um, so can we have a a, um.
Dr. Jackson, do you have anybody waiting for you to come out into?
No, I just.
Okay.
It's gonna make some to clean my carpet because Phil Bauer's been in the house.
All right.
It's gonna be okay.
Yeah.
So the first one, I need a motion.
So we just need a motion, right? Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve the maternity leave request for Rachel Slattery extended through November first, twenty twenty twenty, as presented.
Second.
For President Griffin.
Absent.
Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
All right, uh, Board Member Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve the family medical leave request for Laquisha Kelly commencing September twentieth, twenty twenty-two through and including October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Um, President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah.
Hey.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve Administrative Assistant Yesska Alar- Alar Khan an additional two point eight three per increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah.
Hey.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
All right, uh, Board Member Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve Administrative Assistant Erica Padilla an additional two point one two percent increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
All right, uh, Board Member Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve Administrative Assistant Colleen Smith an additional two point one two percent increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, as presented.
Second.
For President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah.
Hey.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor. Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve to take action on, I'm sorry. Uh, I need the wording on that one, Dr. Jackson. Right now, we're just getting the wording correct. Okay, so.
Put them in the middle of that.
Right. But so the word is.
I mean, sorry, I.
So you're gonna read the motion that is here, and then you are going to, so you're gonna read this right here, it's the stuff and close session. Then you'll go to that second page, whether it's resident or non-resident, and add the pending verification to the end. So and re.
This one, and then we go to this.
And reconvene. Mm-hmm, then you got the page with the, uh, motion on it.
That's the non-resident.
Okay, and then.
Seven, that's what we're looking at.
You said what?
Page seven, so I I start on the first page, I start on the first page, page five, and then I go to page seven.
And at the end, you add the text.
And I add, okay.
I send it to everyone.
Got you. Uh, let me know if I don't do this correct.
You will.
I make a motion that the board approve to take action on residency dispute as discussed in closed session for student number two zero two one nine. Based upon and after the board's consideration of the information presented at the residency review he meeting held on Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the board education finds that student number two zero two one nine is not a legal resident of Lindo School District number, uh, ninety-two and is not therefore entitled to enroll or attend District ninety-two schools on a tuition fee basis, pending verification of residency documentation and legal review.
Second.
For President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member Morris.
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor. Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
You want to do one?
Yeah, what what what, where do we start?
It's like number seven, number seven, yeah.
I make a motion that the board approve to take action. Uh, just for the second one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So is that, is that seven?
Seven.
Seven. I make a motion that the board approve to take action on residency dispute as discussed in closed session for the prospective student number two zero three zero five. I move based upon and after the board consideration of the information presented at the residency review meeting held on Tuesday, September twenty of twenty twenty-two, the board of education finds that student number two zero.
Three zero five.
Uh-uh. Ain't no number on that.
Okay, that's the, it's that, I'm sorry, two zero three zero five. That is two zero three zero five.
Is, uh, is it on here?
It's not on here.
No, it's not.
But it's on the, it's the same student because it's on the front page. You already said two zero three zero five. They have not registered yet, so they don't have an I D number. We just gave.
Oh, okay.
Be done, but it is, if they were here, it would be two zero three zero five.
Okay, um. Okay, um, I'll go back. Uh, I move based upon and after the board consideration of the information presented at the residency hearing review meeting held on, uh, Tuesday, September twenty, twenty twenty-two, that the board finds that the prospective new student, uh, two zero three zero five, is not therefore entitled to enroll or attend District ninety-two school on a tuition free basis.
President Griffin's absent.
Second, second.
Brian Dawson, second it.
President Griffin? Vice President Hannah?
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member Morris?
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams, Williams Wilford?
Yay.
That's it. I make a motion that the board approve the hire of Mr. Ahmad Henry custodial at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars pending successful background check.
A second, Tanya Taylor.
President Griffin's absent. Vice President Hannah?
Vice President Hannah? Did he cut off?
No, I see his picture still up there.
He might have people in there.
Board Member, oh, Board Member Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member Morris?
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
That sound like he on the, uh, Lindo alum. Is he, Dr. Jackson? Dr. Jackson, is that a Lindo alum?
He just went out.
Who just went out, Aaron?
Yeah, it's okay. It's all right.
Motion passed. I make a motion that the board approve the, of the request for, uh, intermittent family medical leave for Em, Em, Emily Rubenstein.
A second, Board Member Tanya Taylor.
President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah?
Absent.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Morris?
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Motion passed. I make a motion that the board approve the hire of Mr. Jermaine Gross Custo, Gross, sorry, who? Okay. Custodial at an hourly rate of sixteen twenty pending successful background check.
Tanya Taylor, a second.
Um, President Griffin, absent. Vice President Hannah, absent. Board Member Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member Morris?
Yeah.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Tanya, you running a meeting now.
So now Mr. Hannah is back.
Motion passed. We on the last one. He ain't nobody back up there.
Oh, there he is, he's back.
That don't mean nothing. We through now. Come on.
Okay, I make a motion, Brian Dawson, that the board approve to hire Maisha Bailey, a paraprofessional at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars pending successful background check.
A second. Tanya Taylor?
President Griffin, uh, absent. Vice President Hannah? Board Member Dawson?
Yeah.
Board Member Morris?
I abstain. That is my niece. I didn't even know that.
Oh, okay.
Secretary Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member, I mean, Williams Wilford?
Um, Brian Dawson, I move to adjourn. At ten twenty-two P M.
Get that, a second.
Hannah seconded.
All in favor? What? Oh, we, we gotta get this in the morning. We gotta get this.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes?
I'm gonna call you right quick. I have a question.